Maybe y'all should sit every other one.
Chief Andy? Chief Andy, will you pray for us this evening?
Thank you.
Not right yet. All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:01, and we're going to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for June 15th of 2021. We're going to begin this evening with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Alexander has just arrived, and I've asked Chief Andy to offer the invocation this evening. I'm gonna give you a week off, councilman. And so Chief Andy's gonna lead us in the invocation, and then Councilwoman Love is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will stand with me, please.
Pray with me. Kind most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you again for a beautiful day you've given us in this city, Lord. We thank you for the leaders here in our city and the department heads, Lord. We thank for all the workers, Lord. We pray for those that may be sick or shut in this day, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to guide us and give us your wisdom, Lord, to do the city's business, Lord, on behalf of our citizens. In Jesus' name, we beg it all. Amen.
Please face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilwoman Fann is absent. Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Portent is also absent, but Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Right now, we have the minutes from the May 4th, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting and the May 18th, 2021 City Council meeting. Have a motion to approve somewhere down here. Councilman Alexander, and a second by Councilwoman Love? George, okay. Man, I'm just about to throw it out. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Saying none, others in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Minutes are approved unanimously. Now, we're going to open the floor for public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that people can come forward and speak to any item that is on the evening's agenda. There are no public hearings scheduled this evening, but there will also be public comment on non-agenda-related items at the end of the meeting. So if it's something that's on the agenda, you speak at the beginning of the meeting. If it's something that's not on the agenda, you speak at the end of the meeting. You'll have five minutes to speak, and we ask that you introduce yourself and give us your name and address. So with that, public recognition on agenda-related items is open. And anyone may come forward. Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so we're going to close public recognition on agenda-related items and move along to Mayor's comments. I do have just a few comments to share with you this evening. I actually have two proclamations, and I think I will begin the things that I need to go over with reading the proclamations. I'm gonna go to the podium to do them because I have a special guest joining me for at least one of them. And so we'll start with June Dairy Month, if you would like to join me at the podium. I was gonna say, it looks like you should begin, so I'll let you introduce yourself and talk about what you brought with you. Use the microphone. I'll be your distributor.
All righty. All good. So I am the chairman for June Dairy Month, and what we do is we go around. Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Abigail Barnett. I'm a rising junior at Portland High School, and with 4H and the Dairy Alliance, I am June Dairy Month Chairman of Sumner County, and I go around and promote dairy because the dairy industry's actually dying. We only have two dairies left in Sumner County. The Rippeys up in Westmoreland and the Hester's up in Portland. So we just go out and we promote dairy because dairy has non-essential nutrients that any dairy product contains, sorry.
Essential to your good health.
Yeah, essential to your good health.
I want high-salt milk, chocolate or white.
I'll take chocolate.
Okay, chocolate or white. Chocolate or white. Chocolate or white. Chocolate.
Yeah, the chocolate milk has gotten depleted there.
It's a good thing I got the white one. So we are out of chocolate milk for the evening. Anybody ever hear of white milk? She has plenty.
So this is our, thank you so much, Abigail. This is our annual proclamation because we do recognize Dairy Month, because recognizing our dairy farmers, our industry, and the importance of dairy products is very important. This says, proclamation by the mayor, it says, whereas Tennessee dairy farmers and the dairy industry have contributed to the development and well-being of Gallatin, Tennessee since the city's earliest formation by the General Assembly in 1802, and whereas the dairy industry is a major contributor to citizens all across the county, state, and nation, and has a significant impact on the health, welfare, and the economy of our nation, and whereas milk and milk products provide numerous physical, psychological, nutritional benefits to the growth, energy, and overall wellness of our citizens, and whereas real milk and milk products are undisputedly superior in their imitations in quality, superior to their imitations, in quality, taste, and value, now therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Dairy Month, thereby highlighting the dairy industry and asking all citizens of Gallatin to join in celebrating 84 years of honoring dairy farmers and observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. So thank you and congratulations, and I think Mr. Hinchell's going to take a photo. Should we get him up for the photo?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And the second proclamation I have this evening is in honor of Juneteenth. I don't know if there's anyone that wants to come forward for this. I don't see Ms. Sibler, but I will go ahead and present the proclamation and give it to her this weekend because I'll definitely see her then. So this is another proclamation. It says, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for passing the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America, and whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed about two and a half years until June 19th of 1865 in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and southwestern states, and whereas on June 19th each year, we look back to the day in 1865 on which Union General Gordon Granger led groups to Galveston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and slavery. Thousands of enslaved people experienced freedom for the first time. This day has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19." So whereas, over the next several decades, African-Americans began different celebrations to commemorate Juneteenth, the day to honor heritage, culture, and contributions of African-Americans, and whereas, on June 19th, 1865, General Granger's announcement called for absolute equality. Juneteenth is the day we can all take one step closer in achieving this vision. We can commit and come together, young and old, to listen, learn, and to refresh the drive for freedom and equality for all people. And whereas, the city of Gallatin and the Gallatin area community recognize that the lives of Black people matter in the Gallatin community, that Black and Brown people deserve respect, dignity, and access to opportunity. And whereas, the city of Gallatin promotes Juneteenth and subsequent celebrations as an elective working holiday, now therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of the city of Gallatin, to hereby recognize Saturday, June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth in the city of Gallatin and urge all citizens to join in celebrating this special day and to encourage the community, including agencies, businesses, and schools, to acknowledge Juneteenth by supporting an elective holiday and/or hosting assemblies or activities to celebrate. And I do believe that there are a couple events happening this weekend. I am well aware of the one at the Fairgrounds on Blythe Street, and that one is happening on Saturday, I do believe. It's on my notes over here. I'm gonna go there and I'm gonna give it to you for certain. Thank you for that. And on my list of events, the Juneteenth event is on actual Juneteenth. It is, oh, there's one, I'm sorry, okay. There is a celebration on Saturday, which is Juneteenth, and that one is happening at Clearview Park. And then there is one on Sunday, which is the 20th, and that one is happening on the Fairgrounds on Blythe Avenue. Also coming up this week, actually, I think, starting today, the Sumner County Fair is happening here in Gallatin at the Sumner County Fairgrounds on, is that Fairgrounds Road? I don't know what road that is. Over near the post office. On Tuesday, also, well, no, that already happened today, sorry. On this Thursday, which is the 17th, the first Third Thursday for two seasons. So this is the return of Third Thursday after a year without it. And this Thursday, and this is brought to you by Historic Downtown Gallatin, this Thursday, a local, well-known songwriter and great singer named Matt Warren is going to be performing with some of his very well-known songwriter friends, and they're going to be opened up for by the Salty Dogs. On Friday, at the Palace Theater, they're having the kids' summer movie series this weekend, It's a Bug's Life. Also, this Friday, the Moonlight Market is happening at the Gallatin Farmers Market. That happens at night. That's from 6:00 until 9:00 p.m. And also on Sunday, there's the Gallatin Talk Walk, brought to you by the Gallatin Arts Council. That's happening at the Triple Creek Pavilion from 10:00 until 6:00. And then next Wednesday, Love Songs on the Lawn at Stonewall on Main Street. And I want to remind this council of a couple of things. One is that next Thursday is the award ceremony for the Gallatin Police Department. Also, I want to remind this council about the Elected Officials Academy that is happening this June, presented to you by MTAS. The sessions are June 21st, 23rd, 28th, and 30th. And that's a great opportunity, particularly this year, because you can participate virtually. Also, I want to mention that our Gallatin Fire Departments, all stations, and our Gallatin Police Department are hosting a food drive in affiliation in conjunction and cooperation with Second Harvest Food Bank, and so they'll be collecting food from anyone who would like to contribute through the end of this month, I do believe. Does that sound right? Okay. I got a nod down there. And then finally, I just want to mention that our thoughts and prayers are certainly with to very special members of this council. You know that Councilman Fann lost his beloved fiancee this week, and she was actually laid to rest today. And Councilwoman Love's mother-in-law, Frances Love, who was a very active member of this community for a lot of years, passed away too early this weekend. So I know that we are thinking of you, our prayers are with you, and also with Councilman Fann and their families, so. Absolutely. That's going to conclude my comments for the evening, and we're going to move now to the regular agenda. We are going to begin with item number one, which is third reading on ordinance 02105-28. And Vice Mayor Fennell, that is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance to provide revenue for the city of Gallatin, Tennessee for municipal purposes for the 2021 tax year and the 2022 fiscal year. So move.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? That does officially set the tax rate for the year. And with that, I will ask for all in favor to please say aye. Opposed, to please say no. Okay. It does pass third reading unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 02105-30, and Councilwoman Love, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin rezoning a two lots totaling .436 plus or minus acres from commercial general district to MRO multiple residential and office district with preliminary master development plan for Triple Brook on four lots totaling .865 plus or minus acres located at 736 Northwater Avenue, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? This is second reading on ordinance 02105-31. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number four is first reading on ordinance 02106-36. I'm gonna ask Councilman Alexander, will you take this, please?
Number three. What about three?
Did I miss something? Well, all right. Yeah, let's go back to item number three, which is second reading on ordinance 02105-31. Councilman Alexander, would you take that, please?
I think I will. This is second reading on an order of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning 8.28 plus or minus acre partial text map 126B, Group B partial 002.00 from the R10 medium-density residential district to the MRO multiple residential and office district with a preliminary master development plan for Red River Road Townhomes located northwest of the intersection of Red River Road and Long Hollow Pike, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict ordinance providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say again that I don't like this location due to the high-traffic area, so I'll be voting no.
Anyone else? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02105-31. I'm gonna ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
There are four yeses and one no.
Thank you. Second reading on ordinance 02105-31 does pass four to one. Item number four is first reading on ordinance 02106-36. Councilman Alexander, would you please?
This is the first reading on ordinance number 02106, I'm sorry, 02106-36, order to vacate right-of-way of a 0.19 acre segment of Old Lock 4 Road indicated south of Nashville Pike and east of Lock 4. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02106-36. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 02106-37. And Councilman Hayes, will you take this, please?
Sure. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee rezoning two lots comprising 1.37 acres from the MUG Mixed Use General District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District with a preliminary master development for Gallatin Daycare, South Park, located north of South Park Circle and west of Highway 109. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion on this?
See, Councilman Overton.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking down and they hit that to it was originally assigned to.
Tell me we don't look alike.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All right, this is first reading on ordinance 02106-37. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, it's approved on first reading unanimously. Item number six is first reading on ordinance 02106-38. I'm gonna ask Ms. George if you would take this, please?
Thank you. Mayor? An ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee rezoning .645 acres, acre portion of three lots and a 0.093 plus or minus acre portion of abandoned and vacated right-of-way totaling 0.738 plus or minus acres from the R20 low-density residential district to the MRO multiple residential and office district with a preliminary master development plan for 909 Nashville Pike located south of Nashville Pike and east of Lock 4 Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman George.
Second.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Opening up the floor for any discussion?
Is this that piece of land, okay?
Well, I guess I should let you finish your question.
Turning in Lock 4 Road from, okay, on the left, right there. Okay. And they're wanting to put what in that area? Oh, good.
Motion and a second. Any other conversation, discussion questions? Okay, we're gonna vote on first reading. This is first reading on ordinance 02106-38. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. First reading goes past unanimously. Item number seven is first reading on ordinance 02106-39. Councilman Hayes.
This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee rezoning 9.26 acres from the rural residential district to the mixed-use district and 1.244 acres from the rural residential district to the PGC Plan, general commercial district, and approval of an amendment to the Westfield Preliminary Master Development Plan comprising 13.21 acres located east of Big Station Camp Boulevard and north of Lakeland Drive. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion, questions?
Is this where we'll be able to have a road that's gonna be paved?
This is part of that development, but recall that this does not include that road because we still have to come up with the solution, and this is what I'm trying to work with Hendersonville and the county on.
Do we know how long that's gonna take?
Been going on forever.
Unfortunately.
Wow. So bad for the city coming in that way. I mean, it is terrible for county residents, the city of Gallatin residents, and the city of Hendersonville residents. I do not feel it's the city of Gallatin's responsibility. The road was not maintained for a very, very long time. The county and the city of Gallatin both paved their portions maybe, what, four or five years ago? And so the portion that was in the city of Hendersonville that hasn't been paved has deteriorated and actually needs to be almost completely rebuilt. So trying to...
So it's up to Hendersonville to do this?
Well, my opinion would be yes, but I don't think that's realistic, and so we're trying to formulate a solution that takes all interested parties, making some kind of contribution for the good of all our citizens.
Hendersonville has DNX, that portion of the road now.
And the county has not accepted it.
They have not accepted it.
One place it is absolutely not is in the city of Gallatin.
Wow. It still hurts the city as, I mean...
Right, right. People believe it to be the city, and it is terrible.
Will we put up a sign saying this is not the city?
Well, we have a sign. Originally, we had signs that said, I think it said... Yeah, we put up signs that said Hendersonville city limits, but when they made the annex it and took down those signs, then we put up signs that said, leaving Gallatin city limits. So we're trying to let people know, but it needs fixing. And, you know, I don't think the solution's necessarily gonna be a fair one, but it's gonna be the right thing to do when we get there, and hopefully sooner rather than later. Like this year, I don't wanna go for another winter. We need to get that taken care of. Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02106-39. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Is approved unanimously. Item eight is Resolution R2106-42. Vice Mayor Fennell.
This is a resolution amending public records policy. So move.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? Okay, this is Resolution R2106-42. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Approved unanimously. Item number nine is Resolution R2106-46. Councilwoman George.
This is a resolution to revise the employee pay plans. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Fennell, and just to be clear, that is to institute the COLA increase that's going to happen with the new fiscal year. We have to do it that way. So that is it. Resolution R2106-46. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Approved unanimously. Item number 10 is Resolution R2106-47. Councilman Hayes.
This is a resolution reappointing Beth Bennett to the Gallatin Electric Power Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? It's Resolution R2106-47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It's passed unanimously. And item number 11 is confirmation of the appointment of interim fire chief. To give you all some background, as you recall, last week at our special call meeting to hire a fire chief, our interim fire chief had a Gallatin Fire Department employee to essentially read a resignation letter. And so with that, our interim fire chief was gone, and I think it was the next day that I appointed Chief Finwest from within the Gallatin Fire Department to serve as interim chief. It is now this council's role to, in my mind, hopefully confirm that until a new chief is permanently in place.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion, questions? And Chief West is here this evening. If you don't know him, introduce yourself to him before you leave. Anything you wanna say? He says, no, don't put me on the spot, right? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Okay, that concludes the regular agenda, and that's going to bring us now to other business. I do have a couple of things that I want to share with you.
I'm sorry, I should've disclosed that my son is a firefighter for the city of Gallatin and that this will not affect him or myself personally or financially. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman Love. Lot going on tonight, that's for certain. So with that, we are concluding the regular agenda and moving now to other business, and I do have some bits of good news to share with you, the first of which is that following our special call meeting last week, an offer was extended to Chief Jeff Beaven out of Germantown, and he has accepted our offer. We do not have a firm start date yet. He's hoping middle of August, but will follow up with us when he can actually get everything in place because they actually have a contract with their department heads in Germantown, and so he's working that out with his HR department. He's actually in town this week because he is at the state EMS convention, and so some of you have the opportunity to meet him, and he has been meeting some of our fire personnel today, so that's good. Very, very pleased with that. The second thing, this is an informational item that I just want to share with you. I want you all to put on your calendar, and the public as well, 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, July 27th, because that is the date that we are going to be having the public reveal of Planned Gallatin. We're going to be having that prior to a council meeting. It will take about an hour, and we will have that program that evening. And so that's going to be the reveal, and then we will talk about the next steps at that time. And then the final item for me is some good news, but I think it's appropriate that I ask Mr. Bill McCord to come up and share it. You should get some glory sometime, Bill, right?
Well, McCord, City Planner, I wasn't expecting to be called up, but the notice that she was referring to is what we received today from TDOT that we were the recipients of the grant that we had applied for, gosh, I can't remember how long it's been. Been about eight months or so, to construct a portion of the Vaulstate Gap Trail in front of the college, so.
Yay. 940...
That process.
Wow, that's amazing.
Total grant, so we're real happy to get that, and that'll build an important link in that hopefully soon-to-be-completed trail that will stretch all the way to Hendersonville.
And I want you to introduce it because you've been such a proponent and champion of it, and I know that you and engineering all worked on it, so thank you.
We'll continue to do that and bring you more and more requests, so look forward. Way to go.
Awesome. Nice contribution to our city from dollars that aren't our taxpayers, and it always makes me happy. Okay, with that, thank you, Mr. McCord. Any one else on this council with any other business this evening? And you know what? I'm gonna move along to public recognition on non-agenda-related... Oh, sorry, I forgot. We do have a... We do have a couple of items from Mr. DePree.
Richard DePree, Public Works Superintendent. I've had a couple of requests this week. Ms. Kenesha Dotson, she's the owner of KB Popcorn. Her, along with some other business owners, will be hosting the event at 536 Bligh Avenue on Sunday. They have requested that, to utilize some of our trashcans for the event. We could drop off on Friday, pick them up on Monday. I did tell her that if, if the council approved it, we would, they would be responsible for those trashcans and damages, or if anything got lost. She was very understanding of that, but with y'all's approval, I will get that set up. And the same thing for the fair. Mr. Jimmy Moore has asked for some trashcans. I guess we've always done it in the past, he said, but he had asked for trashcans as well, so.
Motion to approve both.
Second.
Mr. DePree, did you find out that with the fair, do they pay at all for the servicing of them? Because he's also asked for daily servicing of all those cans.
Now, I talked to our environmental service supervisor, and he said, to his knowledge, there's never.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't deviating from anything typical that we had done. Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve service, providing cans and servicing for both of those events. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, go ahead, approved unanimously.
Only other thing, I wanted to give y'all an update. We received all the bids back for the downtown lighted crosswalks. Awarded that bid, looking like getting the materials is going to be the tough part. They're saying about 45 days, so hopefully here in the next month and a half, you will see some progress. We're going to be doing all the install in-house, so hopefully next month and a half, we'll get that going, so. I know that's, Mr. Alexander's green men have been taking the killing down there.
Seeing little men laying down in the road, I just pray over them.
They just got smashed big time this week. Well, that 45 days sounds pretty good considering what you were telling me this morning about some of the other utility products that are hundreds of days out, so. Thank you, Mr. DePree.
Richard, let me ask you a question while you're up here. The building right next to Top Hog, the old shoe world, I don't really know what it is now.
It was at one point where they were making those barbecue sauces. I can't think of the name of the company, right? If you're facing Top Hog, it's to the right, it's that metal building on the corner.
And they used to sell shoes there a long, long time ago.
It used to be Shoe World. But anyway, there's been a lot of debris there on the side of that road, and some of the neighbors have been complaining about it. Could you check that out for me?
I'll take a look.
Let me know what the status is on that. Thank you.
Any other, last call for other, other business. All right, we'll move along to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is where you may come forward and speak to anything that is not on the agenda. Again, you'll have five minutes. We ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address.
My name is Joe DeBorden, I live at 1007 Hart Street. And I have a couple of issues I'd like to run by the council tonight. The question, the first question I've got out of is what happened to the new sign we were supposed to get on, out here in front of the city hall? Have you figured that one out yet, Mayor?
You asked me about that a week ago. I told you we're working on it.
Okay, I'm just checking. Okay, next question, next question I have, is the Langley Farm property available for I went by there the other day, and the shade trees out there look so pretty, Mayor. My gosh, I literally throw my Chase lounge out there and sip, sip some, sip some nice tea with Mr. John B., and we didn't have a time sitting there under those trees. Are we not using that at all, and the reason why? Because when people in there turn it all to pieces and leaving trash? Is that about what the deal is there?
No, we do not have that park, or not, it's not park at this point. We haven't, you know, our, we have big dreams for that property, but we have not invested any money in the development of it yet. I do think that, you know, I would be, and certainly this council would be, open to anyone that wanted to have maybe a festival there. Remember, we're not going to compete with any local venues with that property.
No, no.
But if someone wanted to have like a, a public festival or something, I think that would be a neat thing to have there.
It's a beautiful piece of property. Y'all did a good job about getting it. There's some complaints about that, but we need to have open space within the city of Gallatin, period. And with those nice trees and everything out there, it's one of those places by which a little serenity away from all the hustle and bustle of town would be a wonderful place to have that, and that's why I was asking about the availability of being able to use it, period.
And we don't have any public facilities there yet, but our Parks Department is doing a beautiful job of taking care of it.
Oh, it's pretty out there. Of course, I didn't want to pick, pick on the pretty lady back there because Mr. Brown's not here tonight. Now, I heard through the van that we're possibly planning on doing some work on Dorothy Jordan and Bligh Streets, widening and, and fixing those streets over there, possibly going in there with a third lane and, and part of it to the tune of a three-lane all the way up through there, which would be advantageous for anybody whatsoever. I think it's a good idea because that's the main street on the other side of the tracks, if you want to be technical about it. It also gets you in there to some industrial properties over there where you can get in and out of there a whole lot better. And my, my rub on the thing is this, we do not need to be going across the railroad track out here on Red River Road with big trucks. They need to be going across, going across the bridge as soon as the bridge is built up there on the upper end. So I would suggest, since the mayor is leading the road crew around this part of the world, one of the leaders in, in setting up roads, that you would ask the state to pick that up and move 174 from coming across the railroad track and going up this way on 31, going right up through there, and they can pay that bill for widening and fixing up that street. That's my, my suggestion. May not happen, but that's my suggestion. Now, we should revisit requirement of certification for employees because things have changed. In the last couple of weeks, we see where we've had a hullabaloo on, on some of that stuff, and we need to look at it again. In particular, one place in particular that I have personal knowledge of and have been certified in, and that has to do with our technicians at the service center. They service everything we have in our community, and if we don't have technicians to do that work and have people trained for that in the future, we're going to run into a big problem. I know one, one particular company in, in town that basically had to shut down their shop and hire a company to come in and actually take care of their equipment. Now, we do not need to do that. We need to have a situation by which we can go in there possibly and open up a, a opportunity there for training of people, and it would be good for the community and good for our people. So that's my deal on that. And I would like to see an ASE sign on the building over there showing that our people are certified to do their job. That's what I want to see, and I've asked for this several times before. And finally, Mayor, weigh the trash.
Huh?
Weigh the trash.
Hey, Joe, you want my chocolate milk?
Thank you, Mr. DeBorden.
Want this?
No, I'll let you drink it. You need to be there. Big old musk off him. What are you doing? Joe took up most of my time.
No, you get your own time.
Counselor, I'm Charles Brinkley. I reside at 155 Alpha Drive, here in Gallatin, 37066. There's 5122. Mayor, Joe, you left one out.
Okay, keep going.
And I do not want this to sound trivia, but I am concerned it's an observation that I just made about the pedestrian signs out here. Somebody need to tell me something, or I'm having a dream. Every time I come up through there, I sit them down. Then in the evening, they back up. Mayor, I need to ask you a question. That 43 million dollars that you budget, you did save some for those signs, repaired the signs, pedestrian signs? You going to put them back? And Luke, you don't have to explain it.
Oh.
You really don't.
Now, the pedestrian, you, we haven't met, you probably haven't been here, but we're actually getting rid of the pedestrian signs, and we're doing crosswalks that have lights that run back and forth, so nobody, people will know when there's people in the crosswalk.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't know how long we were going to do that.
That's what he refers to as the little green men, and they will be gone.
I kind of thought that. I didn't know because I can't, I don't understand that resolution you got on there. Anyway, I, I, I was just concerned, but I really was. But it is, I'm glad you're going to do something about it. So that, that is the status of it right now.
It's not costing $3 million, though.
No, I'm saying in your budget.
No, I asked you, did you put that in your budget?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Actually, I think that we did that prior to the budget.
But that is fine. I, I was just thinking about it. I know when I came through town this morning, nothing was there.
They were both smashed this weekend.
I came back to this meeting, both, and it wouldn't look like that. I just thought I'd throw it in to get y'all started.
Thank you.
John D. picked up those green men.
Next, anyone else? Okay, it looks like no one else is interested in speaking under public recognition on non-agenda-related items, so we have one more motion needed this evening.
Motion, John.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening and enjoy another beautiful day tomorrow. What great weather right now. Be safe, all.